Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the public hearing on the 2018 CTA budget. We have a Spanish interpreter in case anybody needs Spanish assistance tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm the interpreter, Spanish to English and vice versa.
Thank you. We also have sign language interpreters here throughout the entire evening. At this point, then, I would like to recognize Chairman Terry Peterson, who would just like to briefly welcome you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here. Really appreciate it. To some of the board members who are here, so starting to my right, you've got Director Irvine, you've got Director Rosales, you've got CTA President Dorwell Carter, you've got Director Silva, and then you've got Director Youngblood. Really appreciate you being here this evening. Look forward to hearing your comments. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Jeremy Fine, our CFO, who's going to walk you through a brief presentation, and then we're going to get directly to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening to the board and to the public. I'd like to outline the 2018 budget prior to opening it up for the public hearing. The main highlights of the 2018 budget are that the CTA's proposed operating budget of $1.514 billion is balanced and fiscally responsible. The budget is almost $10 million lower than the 2017 budget. We're also proposing a five-year capital budget of $2.7 billion, and service cuts were not an option for the 2018 budget. The 2018 budget has been one of the most challenging in years. We faced a state operating funding cut of $33 million. We face other factors impacting revenue. And the state has also not funded our capital program since 2009, which equates to about $200 million annually. The 2018 budget calls for the first base fare increase since 2009, and bus and rail fares will increase by 25 cents, from $2 to $2.25 for bus, and from $2.25 to $2.50 for rail. It's also important to note that the CTA has maintained its fare structure the longest of any of its peers during this time. And both before and after the fare increase, the CTA's fares will be in the lower half of the peer group. It's also important to note how our fare or how our price increase stacks up against other peers and commodities. Metro pass monthly has gone up almost 100%, as has the Illinois tollway tolls, and gas almost has gone up 40% over the same time period. While all other passes will remain at their current pricing levels, we're proposing an increase to the 30-day pass of $5, from $100 to $105. The price increase will still allow holders to commute during the week and get the ride on the weekends for free. Again, the single ride ticket, as well as the one, three, and seven-day passes, will remain at their current price. And then with regard to reduced fares, we would continue the 50% of the regular bus and rail fares, so bus rides would go from $1 to $1.10, and rail rides would go from $1.10 to $1.25. Student fares would remain at 75 cents, and the free ride program and qualifiers for that program would remain to ride for free. It's important to note that the CTA provides over $100 million of free and reduced fare rides, but only gets reimbursed through the state program for at most $28 million. We would propose that all fare changes go into effect on January 7, 2018. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeremy. We would now like to start the public comment section of the meeting. And just to go over the rules, all people with purple cards should be in the front row, front two rows, because they'd be the first people to speak. And if you'd please limit yourself to three minutes in addressing the board, thank you very much. Sir, there's a spot right over there or right over here, whichever you want. Why don't we start here and move on down? Alan, would you like to start first? Thank you.
I have extra copies. Anybody need extra?
Thank you. You all have copies.
Good evening. My name is Alan Malice, a Lincoln Park community leader for over 40 years, a public transportation advocate, former president, the friends of the Fulton Elevator, and a former member of the Brown Line Task Force. First, before I start my testimony, I'd like to second, there were a positive December 11, 2017 Chicago Tribune editorial which said, "We are appreciative, Mr. Carter, and hope you'll keep delivering." And of course, I assume everybody in the board has seen that editorial in yesterday's paper, so thank you. I would like to compliment you on a new Washington Wabbe CTA elevator station. In addition to the attractive design, which I was told included discouraging pigeons from roosting, has been the addition of elevators on the east side of the loop. This is a welcome addition for my contemporaries and myself. I'm looking forward to the upgrade of the State Lake elevator station that will be accessible as well as providing an accessible connection to the Red Line Lake Street station. Disabled access. In January 2016, the Chicago Tribune reported, quote, "CTA makes rail accessibility for riders with disabilities a long-term goal," end quote. Since then, the CTA has announced major improvements to the Belmont Campbell Blue Line station and the Grand Avenue Blue Line station. However, and I emphasize however, neither the very attractive Belmont station nor the Grand Avenue station provides disabled access. In an article entitled, quote, "Why the Belmont Blue Line Rehab Includes a Futuristic Canopy But No Elevators," end quote, the CTA spokesperson is quoted as saying, "These constraints, limited footprints and proximity to buildings, make expansion to accommodate elevators difficult and expensive." The developer of the project adjacent to the Grand Avenue Blue Line station said he would set aside part of the building to allow for an elevator for the CTA. On the CTA's website, it says, "As part of its all-stations-accessible program ASAP, quote, 'We're committed to making our system 100% accessible.'" If the CTA were truly committed to its all-stations-accessibility program, it would have included disabled access at these two stations. It is doubtful that the CTA will do another major upgrade, including disabled access, for these stations within the next 20 years. Planning for the future. Transit-oriented development. Mayor Manuels changed the Chicago zoning code to encourage transit-oriented development's excellent public policy. The CTA must plan for the additional ridership as more and more transit-oriented development projects come online. This planning includes a need for additional trains, operators, and maintenance. Many platforms are already overcrowded during rush hour. Red-purple modernization. As with TOD planning, future budgets should include resources for additional trains, operators, and maintenance when the RPM project is completed. As part of the RPM project, city-owned land that will no longer be needed plans to be sold through an IFRP process. I have submitted, and I gave you a copy of my suggestions in my testimony, some of my input, the RFP requirements, the new buildings will improve the adjacent streetscape. It is imperative that the RFP process take into account more than just the highest bid. Lincoln Avenue Number 11 Bus. It was extremely disappointing that the Lincoln Avenue bus pilot, days and hours, made it inevitable that the pilot would fail. There are significant numbers of new residential buildings being built along Lincoln Avenue. Yeah, give me 30 seconds. I encourage the CTA to look at restoring the Number 11 bus with a schedule and route that would make it a success and help to increase CTA bus ridership. Ashland BRT. I was happy to read the express buses and smart traffic signals are replacing the Ashland BRT proposal. This seems to be more cost-effective. Lincoln Yards. There needs to be new public transportation. The proposed Sterling Bay, Lincoln Yards project, I have suggested a CTA shuttle that would connect CTA Red and Brown Line stations, the Kleinbauer and Metro stop, and Lincoln Yards, and I've also attached that proposal with a map to my handout. And in conclusion, I would like to thank you for all you're doing to make the CTA the best public transportation system in the country. A first-class public transportation system is key for Chicago to continue to be a world-class city and attract new residences and businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alderman James Kapelman, 46th Ward. I live in the -- I live in the community of Uptown. As a resident of Uptown, close to 50% of the residents rely on mass transit. I do as well. Actually, I was, on my way here, I was running a little bit late because I ran into Santa Claus at the Sheraton L stop. He said his little to everybody. The 46th Ward, we had the completion of the Wilson L station this month, and I can't tell you how much that has transformed this community. Over 30 new businesses have come into the area. It's producing a lot of jobs, employment opportunities. It has just, it has made the community come much more alive. But I think the thing that pleased me most was seeing the smile on a woman's face in a wheelchair who was able to exit the station, the train at Wilson, and was able to exit and go to her apartment. That's made a huge difference in the quality of life for our residents. I remember right before I became alderman, the Red Eye did an article on the crustiest L stations in the city of Chicago. Wilson L was voted crustiest L station three weeks, three years in a row. So I think now we have one of the best stations in the city, and it's something that's been sorely needed. Very, very appreciative of it. As far as the rates, I know as an alderman, we have to act in a fiduciary manner. And oftentimes, as alderman, when I make decisions, we look at best practices throughout the rest of the country. We look at fare rates.
...budget. We're also proposing a five-year capital budget of 2.7 billion, and service cuts were not an option for the 2018 budget. The 2018 budget has been one of the most challenging in years. We faced a state operating funding cut of $33 million. We face other factors impacting revenue. And the state has also not funded our capital program since 2009, which equates to about $200 million annually. The 2018 budget calls for the first base fare increase since 2009, and bus and rail fares will increase by 25 cents, from $2 to $2.25 for bus and from $2.25 to $2.50 for rail. It's also important to note that the CTA has maintained its fare structure the longest of any of its peers during this time. And both before and after the fare increase, the CTA's fares will be in the lower half of the peer group. It's also important to note how our fare or how our price increase stacks up against other peers and commodities. Metro pass monthly has gone up almost 100%, as has the Illinois tollway tolls, and gas almost has gone up 40% over the same time period. While all other passes will remain at their current pricing levels, we're proposing an increase to the 30-day pass of $5, from $100 to $105. The price increase will still allow holders to commute during the week and get the ride on the weekends for free. Again, the single-ride ticket, as well as the 1, 3, and 7-day passes, will remain at their current price. And then with regard to reduced fares, we would continue the 50% of the regular bus and rail fares. So bus rides would go from $1 to $1.10, and rail rides would go from $1.10 to $1.25. Student fares would remain at 75 cents, and the free-ride program and qualifiers for that program would remain to ride for free. It's important to note that the CTA provides over $100 million of free and reduced fare rides, but only gets reimbursed through the state program for at most $28 million. We would propose that all fare changes go into effect on January 7, 2018. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeremy. We would now like to start the public comment section of the meeting. And just to go over the rules, all people with purple cards should be in the front rows, front two rows, because they'd be the first people to speak. And if you'd please limit yourself to three minutes in addressing the board, thank you very much, sir. There's a spot right over there or right over here, whichever you want. Why don't we start here and move on down? Alan, would you like to start first? Thank you.
I have extra copies. Anybody need extra?
Thank you. You all have copies.
My name is Alan Malice, a Lincoln Park community leader for over 40 years, a public transportation advocate, former president of Friends of the Fullerton Elevated, and a former member of the Brown Line Task Force. First, before I start my testimony, I'd like to second, there were a positive December 11, 2017 Chicago Tribune editorial, which said, "We are appreciative, Mr. Carter, and hope you'll keep delivering." And of course, I assume everybody in the board has seen that editorial in yesterday's paper, so thank you. I would like to compliment you on a new Washington WABR CTA elevator station. In addition to the attractive design, which I was told included discouraging pigeons from roosting, has been the addition of elevators on the east side of the loop. This is a welcome addition for my contemporaries and myself. I'm looking forward to the upgrade of the State Lake Elevator Station that will be accessible, as well as providing an accessible connection to the Red Line Lake Street Station. Disabled access. In January 2016, the Chicago Tribune reported, quote, "CTA makes rail accessibility for riders with disabilities a long-term goal," end quote. Since then, the CTA has announced major improvements to the Belmont Campbell Blue Line Station and the Grand Avenue Blue Line Station. However, and I emphasize however, neither the very attractive Belmont Station nor the Grand Avenue Station provides disabled access. In an article entitled, quote, "Why the Belmont Blue Line Rehab Includes a Futuristic Canopy But No Elevators," end quote, the CTA spokesperson is quoted as saying, "These constraints, limited footprints, and proximity to buildings make expansion to accommodate elevators difficult and expensive." The developer of the project adjacent to the Grand Avenue Blue Line Station said he would set aside part of the building to allow for an elevator for the CTA. On the CTA's website, it says, as part of its All Stations Accessible Program ASAP, quote, "We're committed to making our system 100% accessible." If the CTA were truly committed to its All Stations Accessibility Program, it would have included disabled access at these two stations. It is doubtful that the CTA will do another major upgrade, including disabled access for these stations within the next 20 years. Planning for the future. Transit-oriented development. Mayor Manuel's changed the Chicago zoning code to encourage transit-oriented development's excellent public policy. The CTA must plan for the additional ridership as more and more transit-oriented development projects come online. This planning includes a need for additional trains, operators, and maintenance. Many platforms are already overcrowded during rush hour. Red-purple modernization. As with TOD planning, future budgets should include resources for additional trains, operators, and maintenance when the RPM project is completed. As part of the RPM project, city-owned land that will no longer be needed plans to be sold through an IRF process. I have submitted, and I gave you a copy of my suggestions in my testimony, some of my input, the RFP requirements, are new buildings will improve the adjacent streetscape. It is imperative that the RFP process take into account more than just the highest bid. Lincoln Avenue Number 11 Bus. It was extremely disappointing that the Lincoln Avenue Bus pilot, days and hours, made it inevitable that the pilot would fail. There are significant numbers of new residential buildings being built along Lincoln Avenue. Yeah, give me 30 seconds. I encourage the CTA to look at restoring the Number 11 Bus with a schedule and route that would make it a success and help to increase CTA bus ridership. Ashland BRT. I was happy to read the express buses and smart traffic signals are replacing the Ashland BRT proposal. This seems to be more cost-effective. Lincoln Yards. There needs to be new public transportation to propose Sterling Bay-Lincoln Yards Project. I have suggested a CTA shuttle that would connect CTA Red and Brown Line Stations, the Kleinbahn Metro Stop, and Lincoln Yards, and I've also attached that proposal with a map to my handout. And in conclusion, I would like to thank you for all you're doing to make the CTA the best public transportation system in the country. A first-class public transportation system is key for Chicago to continue to be a world-class city and attract new residences and businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Alderman James Kapelman, 46th Ward. I live in the -- I live in the community of Uptown. As a resident of Uptown, close to 50% of the residents rely on mass transit. I do as well. Actually, I was, on my way here, I was running a little bit late because I ran into Santa Claus at the Sheraton L stop. He said his hello to everybody. The 46th Ward, we had the completion of the Wilson L Station this month, and I can't tell you how much that has transformed this community. Over 30 new businesses have come into the area. It's producing a lot of jobs, employment opportunities. It is just, it has made the community come much more alive. But I think the thing that pleased me most was seeing the smile on a woman's face in a wheelchair who was able to exit the station, the train at Wilson, and was able to exit and go to her apartment. That's made a huge difference in the quality of life for our residents. I remember, right before I became Alderman, the Red Eye did an article on the crustiest L stations in the city of Chicago. Wilson L was voted crustiest L station three weeks, three years in a row. So I think now we have one of the best stations in the city, and it's something that's been sorely needed. Very, very appreciative of it. As far as the rates, I know as an Alderman, we have to act in a fiduciary manner. And oftentimes, as Alderman, when I make decisions, we look at best practices throughout the rest of the country. We look at fare rates across the country to help give us some guidance. It's a tough decision. I am now qualified to get a senior discount. I will not do that. I, it's my belief that seniors who have the necessary funds should go without, and I would, I would wish that we could find some way to encourage seniors to not, to not take part in that, so that we can do whatever we can to keep the cost down. But I depend on the CTA. Tomorrow morning is the City Council, and I will again be taking the CTA to that, as I did to my own wedding. I really strongly believe in CTA. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Alderman. You'll be next, ma'am. Just a reminder, as I just said before, please silence or turn off your cell phones. Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Dangerous should ride free.
Thank you.
Dangerous should ride free.
Let the women, please, let the women speak so we can hear her. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Audrey Wenning. I am the Director of Transportation for the Metropolitan Planning Council. My organization is a strong supporter and advocate for Chicago's public transportation, and we are proud to support Chicago's new policy on ride hailing trips. Under the mayor's plan, a fee will be added to every ride on Uber and Lyft, and this revenue will fund nearly $180 million in needed improvements, including security cameras and monitors at stations and track upgrades. Recent research by the University of California-Davis on ride hailing in seven metro areas, including Chicago, showed that these services are increasing car trips in the city, congesting our streets, and cannibalizing transit. MPC believes it is in our region's best interest to prioritize and fund public transportation. Investments in transit benefit everyone in the region. Both transit riders and drivers save time because of the region's robust transit service. CTA provides via bus and rail more than 80% of the public transit trips in the 6th County metropolitan area, either by direct service or service connecting to Metro and PACE. This system is critical to residents' mobility and the region's economic health. Transit investments funded by the ride-hailing fee will save riders time, up to six minutes per trip, and make transit trips more reliable. Maintenance of the CTA transit system has been challenging, however, given chronic underinvestment in transit. According to the Regional Transportation Authority, the backlog of maintenance to get the CTA system to a state of good repair is $12.5 billion. In 2018, the state of Illinois will cut $33 million in state funding to CTA. The ride-hailing fee, therefore, is an innovative solution to both addressing the 2018 budget deficit and making the needed long-term investment in transit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Peterson, President Carter, and members of the Chicago Transit Board. My name is Lawrence Massal, and I'm president of the Civic Federation, 123-year-old nonpartisan government research organization. Our membership consists of leaders from the major corporations, institutions, and professional service firms of the greater Chicago metropolitan area. We appreciate the opportunity to comment on the CTA's proposed fiscal year 2018 budget. Copies of our analysis have been made available to the board and staff and are available for free for anyone who wants to download them at civicfed.org. We appreciate this opportunity and are very concerned about the future of the CTA. The Civic Federation is not able to support the CTA's proposed $1.51 billion spending plan because we believe it overly relies on optimistic projections of restored state transit subsidies and embarks on a dangerous path of trying to borrow for operational expenses rather than cutting expenses or raising adequate revenue. The CTA faces very serious challenges, some of which are the result of inaction at the state of Illinois and at the regional level, and others which are actually outside forces, including historically low gas prices and the increased popularity of ride-sharing. By failing to face the economic reality of decreased state funding and by borrowing millions to close last year's budget gap without a transparent plan for how the debt is going to be paid back, the Chicago Transit Authority is at risk for ever greater financial problems in the future. The Civic Federation could support the proposed 25-cent fare increase if it was tied to a plan that would stabilize the CTA and not likely lead to more mid-year operational reductions. A better path forward for the CTA would be to face the reality of the state's reduced support and couple the proposed fare increase with modest surge pricing, increasing perhaps a 50 cents on a high-demand L train or express bus service. Through increased use of Uber, Lyft, and other ride-sharing services are competing for the CTA's ridership, consumers have grown accustomed to increased pricing during high demand periods. We encourage the CTA to embrace this concept by implementing a reasonable surcharge during periods of high demand in order to maintain service levels and balance the budget. Because L trains and express buses remain much more efficient travel options than cars during periods of high demand, such as rush hour and around large-scale events, we expect that the CTA will be able to maintain a ridership advantage. If the state fails to come through with the anticipated reimbursements, as it has done now for the last four years in a row, and the CTA does not implement new revenue measures, riders will face certain service cuts, or the CTA will slip into an ongoing cycle of short-term borrowing to close budget gaps. Despite our opposition to borrowing for operational expenses and the overly optimistic state revenue sharing, the Civic Federation recognizes many positive items in this budget, including the efficiencies, personnel reductions, and the relatively modest but still inefficient, insufficient fare increase. We further commend the recent strides made by the CTA to improve the customer experience in your modernization of the fleet, enhancing service levels, and improving accessibility and security. In order for the Chicago Transit Authority, along with Metro and PACE, to continue to drive economic growth in our region, the Civic Federation believes the state and the RTA must exercise greater responsibility to provide sufficient operating and capital support. The state must develop a capital improvement plan that adequately funds transit needs across Illinois. Civic Federation also suggests that the Chicago region is perhaps time, it is now time, and we believe it may be better served by an integrated regional transit agency that serves both the suburbs and the city by promoting coordination instead of competition. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Charles Paydock, and I'm Secretary of Citizens Taking Action for Transit-Dependent Riders. Just wanted to let the Aldermen know that the transit system is paid for by the rush hour passengers, the peak service. And there's no reason they can't offer free service to seniors during the off-peak and on weekends. There's, the system is paid for and exists for the rush hour passengers. Every big transit system is. Regarding this, getting back to this, we're back again. I can see that we can't come up with a schedule for an annual budget process on page 151 of the budget. Ladies and gentlemen, absolutely nothing we talk about tonight will be incorporated since this will be voted on tomorrow morning. In the afternoon, it goes to the Cook County Board, and on the following day, it goes to RTA. So absolutely nothing you say here tonight will be given any consideration whatsoever. Now, first of all, I've got to talk about this PowerPoint, which claims that there has not been a fare increase since 2009. Oh, no, it's a base fare increase. There was a fare increase in 2013. There, in fact, there's been about 21 fare increases in CTA. They average about every three or so years. We're going to be right back here again in 2020, doing this all over again. Now, there's an assertion made that there's a claim that you got a budget cut of 10% from one funding source, the state of Illinois, and this fare increase is necessary. Now, this is a budget of $1.5 billion, $33 million. I spent 35 years as a government administrator. A 10% cut is not an emergency crisis situation. Now, what do we get for the 30, the fare increase? You've been cutting service for 10 years. You talk about you want one route. What about the 57 routes that have been cut on CTA? What about the 133 L stations that have been closed? Everything, every morning when I wake up, starting on January 8, I'm going to look if there's been no service cuts. I'm going to check your website. Now, you claim you did six service increases during the year. We looked at that. Those are like my, I said, what in the world are you talking about? Now, the other thing, the real reason this fare cut is, increase is coming is there's been a decline in ridership. If you got to go to page 50 and maybe 169, you'll see that ridership has been going down, if anybody follows this, for about the past five years, since 2012. Now, when you increase fares, guess what happens? You get less ridership. So now, we're going to increase fares to decrease ridership, so less fare box revenue. Brilliant! Now, you expand service. Now, one of the things we need is 24-hour service to all of the 85 neighborhoods of this city. That, that's unbelievable. Look at the schedule on your website of the L service. How do you get home? Do we take the, and there's no transit rider, I'm, we, that I spoke to, we get stranded. You have to have 24, this is a major city. It doesn't shut down. Now, the evening and weekend service, that's sad. Look at the schedule from 10 years ago, as we do, we compare it. And there's, and there's nothing but cuts and cuts. So now you come along, you cut service, and you want a fare increase. Well, this doesn't sound like a real good deal to Charlie. And I don't want to take it, and I don't think the riders have to put up with this either. All right, let's see, what else? Basically, the real figure to look at now in your budget, and I didn't find it this year, and I always look for it, are the number of bus stops. Have they increased, or have they gone down? The other thing is the number of operating hours of vehicles, or the number of miles traveled by a train. This is what you want to look for. If those figures have gone down, that's less service. Those are the, really, when I look at the number of bus stops. And that's, and all your, wait a minute, the performance management on 177, that's great. There's no bus bunching in the city. Did you know that? All right, I'm done. All right, thank you very much. I'm just trying to enlighten the guys here.
My name is Peter Donalek. I live in a place called Buena Park. It's up on Irving, off the Lake Shore Drive. I want to thank the various people here who are serving us in the spirit of the Peace Corps, of which I was a volunteer in 1963 to 65 in Brazil. And when I lived in Brazil, I got to see what public transport looks like, and we have a good system here, and we have a good system in other countries, other cities around the country. The problem we're faced with, as many of the commenters have indicated, is that we have a revenue shortfall, $33 million in operating funds and another big number in the form of capital budget. And the reason for that is that the state is not able to give us the money we need to run our system. And ask yourself why. It's because we have a constitution that says we have to have a fixed income tax level. We can't have a progressive income tax level, which means that there are very wealthy people here who are not paying their fair share. And the people who come and work downtown in the big office buildings are being, there's, we're subsidizing their companies who don't contribute their share to get their workers from home to the office and back. So we need to correct that. So what I'd like to suggest to you is that we have a primary election coming up in about 90-some days. I urge you to look at the candidates and find the one in that group who is advocating to change the constitution and get a progressive income tax so that everyone pays their fair share. Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Donna Shaw. I'm a member of Access Living, and I have a problem with the Jefferson 14, I'm sorry, the Jeffrey bus. It should change. I mean, whether it goes straight to 99th or, whether it goes straight, if it goes straight to 99th or 87th Street and 67th Street, they tell us to get off there because they turn, and I don't understand because they don't let me know. There's no communication, there's no announcements, and I have to ask, which, where are you going, you know? And when I pay for my, with my card, was I charged double when I got back onto the 67th Street bus, and I had to go in again when I was going straight to 87th Street, and then I had to get off? So the communications have break down, and then there's no way to let me know. When you look at the front of the bus, you know, or, you know, to ask the driver, I can't hear, so there's no signs, there's no way. So that's a problem for me, and we need that help and make improvements and changes for the system so that we can add signs, whether it's express or not. Thank you.
Ask her if she wants to meet with someone from our planning department right now with those questions.
Yes, now? Do you mean right now?
Yeah. If she wishes to.
I want to see what, I want to hear what other people have to say first, and then, okay.
There's very detailed questions over there.
I'll let you know, okay? Somebody's mic.
Happy holidays to you, Chairman Peterson and President Carter. I'm Garland Armstrong, former CTA ADA Advisory Committee, and I'm also here concerning, especially, my concern is for the reduced fare riders who don't understand that the, since they're going to be taking extremely hard, some of them just don't have enough money to make ends meet, especially when they are trying to have to borrow money to keep up with all the fares going up. And also, too, especially since the state really figures that they don't care whether we live or die, I think it's time now to say, what in the heck is the governor is thinking of, since he's dodging us like a ricochet? And I think it's time for us to say, what are you doing to us? Do you want the, you want the people to be dead and, and go away from us for good? Well, I think it's time now for the feds to go right after the governor for what he's doing right now in Illinois, because he's not doing a fair share, and he's not even communicating with the disability community and the general public. So I think you need to take, I think you need to take this straight directly to the feds, tell them strong harsh words, what the governor, let them see it firsthand so they can see what he's trying to do, because the way he's not doing it, sooner or later, it will haunt him back. So I think you definitely need some strong full power to take this to the feds on it, because once the fed sees what's happening now, they will definitely see the strong harsh words, not only in the community, but also in the ADA community. So I think you should do that. And then also, too, my biggest concern is especially for safety issues, especially when I hear on the news every time when someone's on the tracks, electric tracks, that really makes me hurt so much. And I said, what are they thinking of? And they don't, they don't know it's electric. So I think you need a workshop for the general public to know that those tracks are electric because they could be electrocuted and be dead anytime. So I think you need to have a serious workshop from, from every communities and communicate with them, tell them this is serious electric, because we don't know when the next person wanna see another dead person being caught by electric.
Good evening, uh, good evening. This is, my name is Heather Armstrong. First, I wanna bring up about similar buses that I know of. I can understand they're confusing, 'cause let's say if you're on, the buses that confuse me is on Michigan Avenue, the, the 146, 147, and 151. Those buses are so confusing. If you don't know which bus is going where, you could easily get lost, and you forget, it all of a sudden you haven't found the, let's say you needed the 151, and say you find, you have found the 146, the problem is with the 146 would be is that, the first step would be Belmont, and then you gotta hop on, when you get off of Belmont, then you have to hop on the 151 going back south. Oh, my, serious issue is about the budget. This is like a huge budget issue going on with the General Assembly and the governor, 'cause neither of them know how to compromise and make sure that we have accurate, safe transportation here in the Chicago area, because the Downstaters say, we don't wanna serve Chicago and its region. We don't pay that tax that they do, that 11%. Why should we, why should we fail out of Chicago? And that's our main reason why we're in debt, as a, DRTA and CTA and FACE and Metro. The reason why they're having so many problems is 'cause the Downstaters don't wanna support DRTA and funding for transportation. See, Downstaters don't care if they lose their bus service, 'cause, 'cause they don't really support it. Thank you.
Ms. McCray, my name is Ms. McCray, I'm here speaking on behalf of single parents, students, and majority of the property area, west side, south side area. Jeremy presented a presentation, however, he failed to present the venture program. The venture program is horrible. Out of 100%, I'll give it 25, and because of the 25% is that you're able to manage, if you lose your card, you can go back, pay $5 and get another one, they give you another one. Other than that, it's horrible. Whoever invited that program here, they oughta be ashamed of themselves. The money, the, the presentation that you presented, Jeremy, you forgot to say, every time you get a ticket, you're paying $3, okay? So you don't get all your rides, you're supposed to get three rides, and you don't get, majority of the times, you don't get all the rides. So if you're charging $2.25 for one way, what about the other 25 cents you're charging with the venture card that you have to pay for, the $3 at the transit stations? Okay, that's your 25 cents there. What about the, you're charging $2.75 for the transit? There's another 50 cents that you're charging with the $3 that you have to pay at all the transit stations. So your money is there. What are you guys doing with the money? We don't know. However, your money is there. And let's speak about the negative, when your venture goes into a negative, you have to pay that negative. So there's your money there. Most times, we don't even know that our card is going into a negative, because the way the venture is set up. So people are actually paying more money, so you're asking for a raise or a hike, when your money is actually there. Please, on behalf of the single parents, students, and all the property areas, do not raise the fare. Also, you have horrible customer service. You have hor- horrible customer service in the property areas, your bus service is horrible. However, you want poverty people, people with no income, a, a, a small income, to have, to pay more money. Speaking of 53rd and Pulaski, anything going west, anything going south, is horrible. Treat your customers better. But you have your money there, Jeremy, your money is actually there. You're making more money than you can imagine with the $3 that you pay every time you go to, uh, get a ticket. So your money is there. Thank you.
Hi, hello, members of the board. My name's Angela Lynn, and I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for the Coalition for a Better Chinese-American Community, which is an advocacy group that serves Chinatown and the greater Chinatown area. We've discussed with CTA members previously about running the 31 bus beyond a pilot and the 24 bus on the weekends. These are buses which serve many Chinese people in Chicago, and we thank CTA's earnest attempt to work with us. Despite running numbers where the 24 may seem to be unproductive during the weekdays by CTA measures, there is a great need for that bus during the weekends. Seniors, Chinese seniors go to church, and they go to traditional Chinese medicine clinics, which are actually only open on the weekends, and they also go to DIMSUM, which is a super culturally important event for the seniors as well as their family members. It's, if you've ever been to Chinatown on the weekend, even to DIMSUM, you'll know that it's not an ordinary affair. Since the 24 bus has not been running on the weekends for about two decades now, I think it's time to revisit ways to serve a dramatically different neighborhood than years ago. Alternate routes like the Red Line is useless to seniors, the 500 seniors, or more than 500 seniors that we've talked to, who do not understand English, and who are really afraid to go down, down underground, because they just don't speak English and they don't wanna get lost. And they're also not used to it in their home countries. It's also the 29 bus, which is across the highway, is really dangerous for seniors who are moving with a huge cart of groceries or with limited mobility, especially during the Chicago winters. We understand that CTA is in a financially tough position, but the reality is that this will probably continue. Rather than plugging a hole in the budget, we hope that some real investments can be made on the near south side, perhaps looking into rerouting parts of the 29, or putting some hours that are usually running on the weekdays to the weekends. The neighborhood is slated for new development, actually, on the Wells Wentworth Connector going downtown, and there's also a lot of immigration changes, so it's probably going to continue to develop for the next years to come. And so we hope that CTA can take these new developments into consideration and think about the influx of residents and businesses.
Hello, my name is Tom Ledford. I'm here today to speak with the board and let you know how I feel this budget proposal is terrible for the CTA in the long term, and that we all need to oppose it, and that you should seriously reconsider the proposal. First of all, as this gentleman said here, I think it's lazy politics on the, on, from what I've heard in the media, saying that A1, you know, the state funding cutting, a cut of 10% is responsible for the fare increase. It is an effect on the budget, but that it's not responsible for the fare increase. The state budget should normalize, you know, hopefully in the next few years, and to blame it on that 10% cut is not fair and not true. The real reason that we're paying, that you're proposing a fare increase is in fact that you've shifted capital spending to the operating budget, which is extremely irresponsible, and is, makes me very worried for the CTA in the long term. Historically, capital spending has been tied to sales taxes and other tax revenue. I understand that Illinois, the state of Illinois has not been giving as much, you know, spending as much on the capital program as it has historically. But if you go to other transit agencies around the country, you will find very few examples of asking riders to pay for capital spending. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense on a lot of levels, and that would be a longer conversation, but, you know, to expect that these capital spending will pay for itself with increased ridership is very optimistic, and, you know, there are other tax opportunities, you know, I think the Uber, the ride sharing tax was an example of using additional tax revenue to pay for capital spending. But, you know, a few years ago, there was no debt service in our operating budget. This year, I think that is a new expense, and it's projected to keep going up, and it's just not gonna work, and you need to reconsider how you pay for capital spending. Additionally, you know, I think you're going after the high-income riders paying for, you know, fancy train cars, and meanwhile, you're shifting the burden on, you know, CTA riders who are more low-income and cannot afford, you know, can't afford for these, to sponsor, you know, huge new station at 95th Street. I think that's a good, you know, it's good to build new stations, but we, we need to have, you know, all taxpayers chipping in for that, not just CTA riders. And if you go around the country, you like to point to other agencies and how they, they've raised their fares. Those other agencies aren't doing what you're doing with this, you know, whole boondoggle with your capital spending ideas. It's not gonna work. Additionally, you know, the way we have, you know, when you raise the monthly fares, wealthy people, due to pre-tax benefits, pay way less than poor people. At $5, you're pushing up on the monthly fares? Poor people are paying the full $5. Wealthy people, paying highest marginal tax rates, aren't. That's not fair. You need to do more, you need to put it, you know, put your heads together and figure out how we can get poor people paying less of a burden. It's not fair, you need to reconsider.
Hi, my name's Anna Santoyo, and I'm an organizer with Answer Chicago. As a mother who relies on CTA every day, these fare hikes are an attack on me and my family. Transportation already accounts for a significant portion of our monthly budget. Blaming the need for tax hikes on state funding is an insult, because we know the city has the money. Saying we haven't raised fares in years, so now we can, is criminal. Have working people made more in the past eight years? Hell, no. Our wages have stayed the same. We work harder, and those at the top reap all the rewards. What has gotten more expensive in the last eight years? The salaries for the members of the CTA Board, including the richest contract paid out to the CTA Board President. Answer Chicago noticed that you announced the fares increase, or the fare increase a day before Thanksgiving Day. We immediately started a petition on change.org, and we have gotten many signatures, and we have those petitions here that you can sign too. We absolutely reject and resist the lie that there is no money for transit and people's needs. ROM's got 95 million for a new cop academy, and 2.25 billion for handouts for Amazon, which is owned by the richest man in the world. The city is handing out money to racist gentrifiers like Candy. We say money for people's needs, not for racist cops and billionaires. We will stand together to stop the CTA fare hikes, because they are an outrageous attack on workers, the poor, the disabled, the elderly, and people from oppressed communities. Tax the rich, stop corporate welfare, transit is a right and should be free.
Fare hikes, shut them down! Fare hikes, shut them down! Fare hikes, shut them down!
Hi, my name is Patrick McWilliams, and I'm speaking here today on behalf of the Party for Socialism Liberation. And we are here today, as shirt might tell you, to stand against these proposed fare hikes, because we know that their cost is going to fall disproportionately on the poor and working people of this city, people who are already pushed to the brink. This is gonna result in your average working person forking over more than 120 extra dollars per year, just to get to and from work for transit. It's not even counting weekends. At the same time, the city's claiming it doesn't have the money to fund CTA. It's, as was just mentioned, spending 95 million dollars for a new cop academy, and offering over more, more than $2 billion in incentives to try and bring Amazon headquarters and further gentrify this city. Because whenever we need money for people's needs, to get to their jobs, their families, their lives, suddenly there's none to be found. And instead of looking to those same rich corporations, the city is so eager to get to move here for the money, they come for the poor every time. They come for the working people, they come for the people who are depending on the CTA every day, and try and squeeze just a little bit more water out of that stone. And I don't think it's any coincidence that the money's just not there for people, but seems to always be abundant for corporations, for ROM's rich friends. You know, they say that we need to make these choices for the future of the CTA, but who's deciding on this future? Who's deciding on what it's gonna be, what it's gonna look like, and who it's going to serve? You know, they wanna remake this city into a whitewashed corporate haven, where charter schools replace neighborhood schools, where cops with guns replace mental health services, where condos replace affordable housing, and where public transit just becomes another unaffordable dream. But we're here to fight against that vision for the city of the rich and white, and fight for a city for the many. 25 cents may not sound like much to some, though of course, as we've heard tonight for many who are already on the margins, that does, that 25 cents does make all the difference. But if it's 25 cents this year, it's gonna be 50 cents next year, it's gonna be a dollar the year after. Eight years ago, the last time they tried, that they did hike up CTA fares, they wanted to make it $3. And the only reason they didn't is because the people came out, and the people said no. Mm-hmm, yep. The working people, they oppressed, those who rely on services like CTA day in and day out, they said no more, and that's what we hope to do today and going forward. 'Cause right now, we have a situation where a couple of people are gonna be making a decision that affects the daily lives of millions of people in this city, and this is supposed to be a democracy. This is a decision that many in this city don't even know is happening, thanks to the way it was announced right before a holiday. So we're here to represent the voice of those who have made crystal clear their opposition to this hike. Transit is a right, transit should be free, and we're going to keep fighting and helping to build a people's movement that has the power to make it so, that makes this a city for the many, those who labor day in and day out, and not just a playground for the rich and white only. Thank you.
All right, all right, we're about to, we're about to go back to our speaker, he's gonna come right down this way, we'll be right with you, sir. This gentleman's gonna go next, and then you can speak after him.
My name is Scott Figbed, and I, um...
Fare hikes, shut them down! 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 Upper Cali, 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 shut them down! Amazon, shut them down! Amazon, shut them down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down!
People up there who are not even gonna talk tonight, and I'm glad I didn't see you fall asleep tonight, which I normally do at these meetings, what you're doing tomorrow is criminal. You are criminals who are stealing from the poor and giving to the rich, and you will have your day. Your day is coming, the people's day is coming too, and we're not gonna tolerate the city doing things like this to the people of the city, especially people on the south, the west side, Little Village, and Pilsen, immigrants, poor people, women, elderly, people, no more. Not happening anymore. Whenever you try to do something like this, we're gonna shut you down. We got this many people today, next time, there's gonna be a lot more.
Shut it down! 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 Shut it down!
All right, we're gonna go back to the public hearing, and again, out person, we can't hear the speaker, we will all have to leave the room, and have one speaker at a time come in. So now, we're gonna have to keep it where we can hear the speakers, and the court will try to get it down. Any further outburst, we might have to have everybody out of this room, and one at a time will come in. Thank you very much, sir. Please start. Thank you.
As I was saying, my name is Scott. My name is Scott Figbed, and I had, do a lot of business down here in the city, and I also deal with a lot of the transportation areas. One of the areas I have an issue with is the Jefferson Park Station, and the security and safety and the ability of the ADA riders of the station. As, I don't know if a lot of people have been watching the news, but there was a major bombing out in New York. bombing out in New York with a station similar to Jefferson Park Station and similar to a lot of the stations that are here in the Chicago area. One of the things that I don't see at a lot of the stations here in Chicago is security at the CTA stations, except for the Clark and Lake Station. A lot of remote stations, I don't see a lot of security controlling or maintaining order or helping assist with aid at the stations. And I would like to see that taken care of a lot more. It actually puts a fear into a lot of the riders that have disabilities and have a need sometimes to use the stations, especially like on the ramps and areas that are a little out of the area, out of their way. Because that's where sometimes the homeless like to hide and sleep because it's a warmer area for them sometimes to sleep. And sometimes it'd be helpful to get courteous staff also at the stations to help out with getting assistance. Another area at the Jefferson Park Station, it's hard to even get off the stations, especially for somebody in a wheelchair as I am. Because there is the blue signs that say boarding areas for, by bus, they're not honored sometimes by the buses because buses will blow right past somebody that's disabled. They'll see you sitting there and they'll blow right past you. And then they'll go out to their bus plate area and then when you have to go and you have to work your way back over, sometimes all the way up to the street to get over to be able to get off of the bus areas, they'll say, oh, we didn't see you sitting there. We thought you were going to the next bus. And not my bus. Other things I've seen that are helpful, buses are, people pull the bus cord and they yell, will yell and criticize and be really rude and miscourteous to riders and make it so the riders don't want to come back to even use the public transportation. It's sometimes really, if it was my first time riding the CTA, I wouldn't want to come back if I got yelled at by the driver. Okay, I will. One more thing is looking at trying to get the routes a little bit more synchronized to some of the other public transportation in the area, such as Metro and Pace. Sometimes it'll help out if you're able to actually meet up with other transportation such as the Metro trains and areas and Pace buses instead of having to sit on the platform, empty platform. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Weston Thompson and I'm here to let you know that you are doing a good job of improving the system in terms of new stations and new equipment. However, I would like to state that if you're going to increase the fares, you should couple that with more bus service improvements, like reversing some of the 2010 cuts and bringing back the X3 King Drive Express and the X4 Cottage Grove Express and also have Sunday service more frequent, like on the 82 and 87 streets. And also restore service hours to the way they were, like on the 56 Milwaukee and the 147 Auto Drive Express. Thank you.
Projects that have wasted CTA funds, obviously we all know the superstation. I like the idea of the tunnel to connect blue and red lines, but obviously $400 million not well spent. On the brown line, the wood that was used on the platform was improperly designed and thus purchased, resulting in $1 to $2 million of wasted money to redeck a lot of those platforms. More recently, I want to talk about Argyle, Berwin, Lawrence, and Brynmar. Those stations were redone in 2012 for about $60 million, you do the math with the other three stations that they were with, and it comes out to about $8 million per station. If the red purple modernization plan begins in 2020, that comes out to about $1 million spent per station per year. That's a lot of money to spend and not get a return on investment. I live right off the Sheridan stop. Sheridan stop is in much worse condition than Argyle, Berwin, Lawrence, or Brynmar were. It has higher ridership. It has almost double ridership of Argyle back in 2012. And yet, the improvements it's gotten have been paint, some deck repair, and now some long ongoing structural repair. I know that it's a much bigger project to redo that structurally wise, to add an elevator, all that. But if the same improvements, new floor, new drainage, new lighting, new turnstiles, I mean, there's a convenience store in Sheridan that hasn't been used in decade, two decades. Why is that still taking up space? Why isn't there new turnstiles, new floors, a floor that won't flood? And then most recently, the Wilson L stop, it's a very nice stop, but CTA is good about penny wise, pound foolish. And what I mean by that is the trackage as it goes over Broadway isn't concrete decked, it was used, creosote ties were used on that. Those ties from the second the first track was laid began oozing tar or who knows what onto both the structure and the street below. And tracks two, three, and four, as they were put up in service, have been doing the same thing now. So now, we have a brand new structure that looks like it's rusting and will become a persistent maintenance headache from day one. That was penny wise, but pound foolish. If I talked to the CTA infrastructure chief at one of the RPM meetings a couple months ago, and he said, yeah, you know what, we should have just concrete decked over the roadway. It's decisions like this that, I mean, right there, I just mentioned at least $402 million worth of money not spent well. For the record, I am in support of the fare increase. I think there's been a lot of wrong information here tonight that, not you guys, but people have been spreading. I have strong connections to Washington DC and their metro system is a disaster. It costs more and they're shutting down what's equivalent to our red line north for six months with bus service as the interim solution. CTA would never do that because we've invested in both infrastructure enough and safety enough that we don't need to shut down full service like that. So anyone who thinks that CTA service is bad, go to another city. It's going to be more expensive and it's going to cost, it's going to cost more and you're going to have horrible service. So, thank you.
Brian Kempin.
Hi, I'm Matthew Mers. I'm a resident here. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Compared to other transit systems across the country, CTA is a good example of how important transit modernization is. Even with some serious hardships faced each day, New York's relying on 80-year-old signaling technology and serious delays each day while CTA's 96% on-time rail service is one to be proud of. DC Metro, like mentioned, is dealing with some pretty crippling service issues right now. And here in Chicago, we're rebuilding platform, stations, power supply, and track to make journeys faster and more reliable. CTA is underfunded, as you all know. But you've been smart with the money to keep the nation's second-largest transit system as modern and as efficient as possible, and this credit goes to you. Supporting a fare increase is not popular. This creates hardships on both sides of the equation. For us, the carless taxpayers of the city, the extra 25 cents adds up to about 120 more a year in a standard round trip commute. It's an easier adjustment for some and will be a hardship for many people in the city. A fare increase also puts you in a tricky situation because usually with fare increases, the expectation is that service will improve, but this will just keep service operating at current levels, which is a good thing. Even in an era of poor funding, we want to see funds put to good practical use. Bus ridership's declining, as we know, partly because of ride sharing, but also because sometimes the bus routes are pretty unpredictable and, you know, along with traffic, it's a hassle. We've seen with the success with Loop Link with dedicated bus lanes and train-like platform boarding to buses, and that's pretty popular and it's working. I would, and as this has been explored, it'd be great to see this on Ashland, Western Chicago avenues, and many other avenues in the city. I support the fare increase and I think a lot of us would like to see initiatives to incentivize ridership even more, to create more customers and passengers. Enabling daily and monthly fare capping would be nice through Ventra. Transport for London does this, I think DC Metro does this as well. And it's good just because you don't have to plan ahead that far if you don't know what your travel plans are like. I was disappointed to see that the new 7000 series train order doesn't have articulated gangways. Would have enabled about a 10% capacity increase on a standard eight-car train. But I'm happy that we're getting new cars for these lines. Platform edge doors at major transfer centers would be a valid and noble safety improvement, especially for visitors to the city. And again, bus rapid transit would be a game changer, I think, for the city, not just signal priority signaling like we're experimenting on Ashland. I support the fare increase, like I said, CTA is a blood that keeps a city alive and I think we're willing to step up and support you. I think it's discouraging sometimes to see money thrown to Amazon by the mayor when we have to support this fare increase. But I know those are two separate issues and some ideas. I support this. I think that we need to step up and do this. And if we really wanted to change funding to support you more, we need to vote for a governor candidate who supports progressive taxation and that amendment to the Constitution. So thank you for your time.
I can give a Q. And here's, of course, the Christmas card. And for Kelly too. Mary Sullivan. Welcome, Merry Christmas everybody and Happy New Year. To you, Kelly. Dear members of the board, I feel that the fare increases for the disabled, however few they are, thank God you all didn't increase the monthly for the disabled. But the pay per day increase for the disabled will hurt those who don't have a free ride pass and who come far ones above the income parameters of the BAF benefit access like free income limits, which is $27,000 a year, which ultimately hurt the disabled who can't, who like can't, who are working, who are the working poor but come dollars short of being able to qualify for the wide sweep. Thank you very much.
My name is Ronald Jackson, R-O-N-A-L-D, J-A-C-K-S-O-N. You know, I just, you know, I don't get it. On the 21st of November, both the city and the state at the same time passed budgets. On the 22nd of November, the CTA came up and said they wanted another quarter. How do you do that? Now, Claypool was sitting there, I would almost understand it, okay, you know, but, you know, we're, you know, what is it? We are recycling, we are recycling people that just don't care. You know, I really believe that we have come to a time now where you already know that poor people don't even have the ORE anymore, it's just PO. Ain't no poor, it's just PO. People on the south side, people on the west side. You hear about the violence, but then you cut out bus service after a certain time. You cut out those elements that actually are there, that are needed to make those communities. A lot of people need to, I'm going to try to bring this, you know, because I've heard a lot of good things, a lot of what I wanted to say had already been said. But one thing that I want to say, Cook County Hospital or Shroja Hospital, I think that it was a crying shame that I had someone contact me to tell me that the number seven bus doesn't run on weekends. That, and right, and it doesn't run all night. But then, we're talking about a major hospital sitting there. And then the other day, I found out that the number seven doesn't stop at Ogden anymore because you're tearing down the building at the corner of, on the north side of Ogden and Harrison. So you either have to get off the bus a block back or you have to get off at Damon, which means that a person with disabilities or a person basically that is sick has to walk over 1,000 feet to get to the hospital. You know, that's a shame. The idea that the blue line makes a stop, but even it's further away from a major hospital, I don't understand it. The Damon bus runs, okay, but we need something, we need to understand that that hospital is sitting there. This board shouldn't have to address that or have somebody else to talk about it. They need to understand where are the needs of the public. And with the senseless violence that we have in our communities and people that are, we already have ambulances that are driving from 95th Street to Shroja. We need to make sure that those people that are using Shroja Hospital, County Hospital, actually have transportation to get there 24/7, 365. Thank you.
I've been in the city since 1968 and ridden the buses all the time. I have no car, never had a car. But I'm one of the people that I feel almost a little humble here because I get the free pass because I'm of a certain age and then my income is very, very low. But I'm a person who's single with no kids. I job hunt almost every day. I need to get to the library. I also have the option of going to the suburbs, which is a nice thing with the Metro, with that free pass. So I had heard that, I came in late and I had heard that Alderman Kappelman, he's not my Alderman, but he's up north in that area where I live, and I'm amazed to hear that although he didn't hang around to hear anybody, and he makes, I think, I think there's a six-figure salary that Alderman make. Anyway, I think he had, pardon me. A lot of them do, I guess. Anyway, I was surprised to hear that he had come up to the podium and quickly stated that seniors are, have money to pay. Well, this argument shouldn't be where some of the, there's very articulate young people talking in the area of poverty and everything, but it shouldn't become a socialism versus capitalism versus rich whites. capitalism versus rich white because that ruins the argument for some articulate people that are making sense on a big city needing public transportation. Plus, it's a safety issue too when you're older and you're out late. A lot of people who are unemployed and they're older, they stay up late and you need to go here and there. So when you do, 22 bus, for instance, only runs every half hour, so in cold weather, that's wait. But the, there's a safety issue as well. Say you want to get on an L to get away from a certain situation, maybe you see some unsavory situation and you kind of want to get, for instance, on a subway car, I'm smelling now, never smelled it before, but the marijuana people, coming out of people's pores, apparently, I don't know. I never smelled tobacco before. I mean, I'm more for tobacco than I am marijuana, never smoked either one. But anyway, I'm smelling this, so it's very, it reeks sometime, and you want to move to another car or maybe go to a bus, another bus even. But, so I just thought, I'm appreciative of that pass, and I think it should be continued for people of a certain, low income of a certain age. Thank you.
Kevin Peterson, I'm with Citizens Taking Action for Transit-Dependent Riders. I'm actually a person who rides the bus repeatedly. The fact that you people are acting like, "Oh, this is not a large amount, we're jacking up the fares," and, "Oh, we haven't done it since 2008," or whatever. Yeah, you increased the prices of the passes, you not remember that. It's kind of funny, we've had service cuts every year. In their budget, they're talking about we've added, you guys have added all this service, you're bragging about the Lincoln bus, which you botched when you released it by not having it run during the AM rush hour, and then go, "We cut it off, but that's the service improvement we did." You claim everything is service adjustments, you're raising fares. I mean, Kerry, the entire time you've been sitting here, all these years, we've just had service cuts and service rotting away. Oh, wait, just like when you were in charge of CHA. But yet, you know, again, you remember who else used to be on the board over here? Forrest Claypool, and then he suddenly left and went to CPS because he knew what he was doing. Oh, wait, didn't he have to resign from there too? Not implying anything. Yeah, actually, I am. But, I mean, again, we don't even have all seven board members here. You're voting tomorrow on this. I mean, is the, anybody, you know, going to actually go through all the minutes of the hearing, or? No, no, of course not. I mean, hey, you know, because you guys don't actually care. You don't actually ride the bus. Because you don't care. It's really pathetic. You sit there acting like you're all better than us because, again, we're the poor people who actually have to show up. We're here, you know, we could be doing stuff. I could be spending time with my daughter right now. Instead, I have to be at this hearing to complain about fare increases because, again, somehow you need extra money. You lost 10%. Well, then, wouldn't that be a 10 cent fare increase? If you lost 10%, 10, 10% out of a dollar is 10, is a dime, 10. You know what I mean? But again, you don't care anyway. You're just going to run the system into the ground like you have been, and eh, you don't care. You don't, you hate us all anyway. You're getting off on this anyway because you're all a bunch of stick individuals.
I live in the Jefferson Park area, and I'm a regular CTA user, and I am legally, legally blind. My doctor's treating me for glaucoma, so I've never had a driver's license. I have a free ride pass because of it. I am opposed to this fare increase. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that there's anything in the budget that would justify it. You claim that there's a $33 million deficit. Why are the riders responsible for the deficit? You need to figure out how you got to the deficit and then figure out a way of fixing it instead of blaming the riders for it. Every time you raise fares and cut service by your own figures, you end up losing riders who never come back. And they usually, most of them don't, don't come up here to complain about it, they just go out and buy a car, and then you never see or hear from them again. And, yeah, people, the, the other issue that I don't think has been addressed here, or maybe it has been, in the middle of the year, you do what's, you frequently do what's called service adjustments, service adjustments in quotes, which are really service cuts. That needs to be, that practice needs to be stopped. You need to, if you, if you're, by that, I mean, if a bus, bus route is scheduled to end at 10:00 PM, you suddenly cut it down at 8:00 PM because ridership is low for the last two hours. And typically, people find out that the bus route has been shortened by two hours by accident because they can't get home at that night. And again, those people aren't going to complain to you about it. They'll go out and borrow some money if they have to and go out and buy a car in order to get to a job that pays them 10 bucks an hour flipping burgers at McDonald's or whatever, and maybe take on a second job in order to pay for the car. This is downward spiral from the CTA. What you need to do is instead of raising fares, you need to concentrate on increasing ridership. And there are all kinds of ways that you can increase ridership. Increase lengthen the, the times of the buses, hook up buses to trains in order to encourage people to transfer. In New York, several years ago, they introduced a free, they never had transfers before, they introduced a free transfer, and their ridership doubled. Most, in most other transit systems across the country, ridership is increasing. On CTA, again, by your own figures, ridership has been going down steadily over the last several years. This needs to be reversed. And then, when you do go to Springfield and Washington, you can say, "Okay, our ridership is up," and that would justify a greater subsidy. So, okay. All right. All right, yeah. One other thing, the, you need to make the, you make, need to make the mainline stations accessible, and you need to do it more. I know you're, I know the, part of the red line modernization plan is to make as many stations as possible accessible. You need to accelerate the rate at which you are doing that. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ted Ledford. I'm a resident of Lincoln Park, and I've been a CTA user all my life, until recently. I just want to start by saying that the red line, I commute from Fullerton downtown, I used to do it every day to go to work. I would ride my bike to the station, it was the fastest way to get downtown. However, it takes, I think, seven more minutes usually during rush hour, up to 10 more minutes than it used to. I just ride all the way downtown now. I mean, maybe that's great for people, the train's overcrowded, but, you know, if you want my fare, if you want me to ride, it needs to be fast. I'll save the time I need to, and it's faster to bike. And, you know, once I started biking, I'm just going to keep biking. So, you know, it's nice when biking and transit can work together, but when transit doesn't work, I'm just going to bike. We were talking also about, you know, the fare increase and service levels as well. And I think there's a scary connection with ridership plummeting when you increase fares. And I think it's your responsibility as a board to make sure that you have a budget where you can, you know, improve services, offer services to your riders, and then also not expect riders to have to pay more when the services you're providing and the capital expansions that you're, you know, taking on, aren't working for some reason. I'd like to also call your attention to the central rapid transit, Central BRT line in the loop. I work, you know, right off of Madison, every day at rush hour, I notice the buses aren't going anywhere. That was a $70 million project. There are people taking right turns into what is supposed to be a bus lane, there are cars lining up trying to get out of parking garages. The buses, once the cars leave the parking garage, they can't actually cut into traffic, like, so they're just blocking the lane because they have nowhere to go. And that just creates gridlock, and I'm thinking, "Oh, why don't people take the bus?" Or, "Why don't, why do people think that, you know, we shouldn't be paying more for transit because the service hasn't increased?" And when we do spend money, the service doesn't get any better. I mean, $70 million is a lot. And it's disappointing as well because Chicago has the fewer miles of bus rapid transit than most, like, any other, like, the rest of the major cities in America. And America kind of, you know, lags behind in bus rapid transit anyway. But Chicago is doing very poorly in this, you know, area, and to, you know, miss our chance to get it right with the central bus line is disappointing, and it just makes it harder for citizens, drivers, transit riders to be convinced that it is effective transportation technology. And I want to reiterate that I'm very much against this fare increase, and it really disappoint, it's very disappointing to see, you know, this is the direction that our transit authority wants to take for our city, and especially hurting the poor people, and, you know, not improving transit, actually. Thank you.
This is Mike Gaines, with the Chaddell Park Community Council. I want to say two things. One is, you moved the bus stop from, from King Drive across the street from McDonald's to the library, library fixed to be renovated, I think that's a safety issue. Because now that construction's starting, that new library, people standing there, they're going to get hit by falling debris, that's middle of construction zone pretty soon. So I want to know what's going to happen to the people standing there waiting for the bus, by the middle of construction zone. And also, the bus stop on King, on King Drive itself, on King Drive, the vault just replaced the broken glass, but they didn't install a new bench. So now, people have to stand, especially elders are complaining that they have to stand instead of having to be able to sit on the new bench. So I think when you, the vocals back out here, you need to go over and install a bench on that...
Where is that at?
Seven Ninety King Drive.
Seventy Ninth?
Yeah, on King Drive itself. But, you know, on King Drive, right there by the McDonald's. Because yes, it was busted, but the vault came out, replaced the glass, but never installed a bench. So there's no place to sit there, there's to stand. So that, that was like a complaint that they don't like standing, they won't be able to sit down, wait for the bus. They can't stand, they have to stand because they can't sit, there's no bench there anymore. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a card? Wish to speak. Thank you all very much, and I'm going to put it in the public area. I thank you all.